I'd like to call to order the November 27th meeting of Shelby Township Planning Commission. The Secretary, call the roll please.
Sure. Commissioner Dallo?
Here.
Commissioner De Seco?
Here.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Here.
Commissioner Oppone?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Moore is absent and we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First item is approval of the agenda. If there are no corrections, move by Turner, support by De Seco. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the November 13th meeting.
Still moves, support.
Moved by Dallo, support by Oppone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we've two items of correspondence, one from the city of Rochester Hills, the other from Washington Township. Mr. Winn, do you want to address those?
Certainly. These are just the standard notices that both of the communities, Rochester Hills and Washington, are working on master plan updates. And as they get further along in the process, they'll obviously share those details and we'll review the plans for consistency with our plans. And when that happens, we'll report back to the Planning Commission. Pretty standard notice. Recommendations typically is receive and file.
Great. Is there a motion to receive and file both documents? Moved by Turner.
Support.
Swapped by Oppone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, this evening, the substance of the meeting are five items. First, site plan number 17-48, 505-81 Sabrina Drive. Gotta run together after a while, eh?
Good evening, happy holidays already.
It's good that you're giving us nice, unique products. All of 38700 Van Dyke, Sterling Heights, Michigan.
Here to present three different industrial buildings, all in the same corner at Sabrina and Cavalier, and then existing developed sub already. So, I don't know.
What, just briefly, what are they?
They're all three...
We need to do them one at a time.
I'm sorry?
Let's do them one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
How big is it?
The first one is... First one is 46,000 square feet with about 5,000 square feet of office on it. It's a speculative building, just north of Unit 11. So, this is Unit 11 splitting off piece of Unit 10. So, we're combining two lots to make one. And again, it's a speculative industrial building with brick facade along Sabrina and about 30 foot of height, and a couple truck wells. That's it.
Okay. I believe, Ms. Mizic, you...
Yes.
Did you do this?
Yes, I did. I only had a couple comments. Replace the wall pack W fixture with the full and full cutoff wall pack fixture that you have labeled as W2 on the other site plans. And then, the building department said add additional accessible parking space. And minor comments from the engineer, library and page numbers for the recorded easements must be indicated on the site plan. Entrance and any improvements on Sabrina Drive is subject to review and approval of Macomb County Department of Roads. And there's no freestanding sign indicated for the site. Utility conflicts could not be determined. And it said, "The proposed red maples appear to conflict with existing sanitary sewer. Clarify the areas of existing pavement or curb versus proposed." And the site plan review for Unit 9 and 10 indicated that additional proposed fire suppression taps from the proposed water main for that unit would require a looping of the water main to Cavalier Drive. And then it said, "Currently, the 12-inch water main is indicated with three building fire suppression lines and two hydrants on the dead end water main. Provide a loop back to the existing 12-inch main on Sabrina at the location of the 45-degree bend at the south end of the site."
Okay, and actually, we just had a meeting with Fazel Khan this morning, and we are looping those existing dead end water mains.
Okay.
Any thoughts on any of the other issues that were raised?
No, we can address all those, and actually, probably, most of them have been addressed during the engineering of the unit to the south.
Okay. Okay, to the board, Mr. Dallo, your question?
Mr. Moffett, just some clarification too. The property has a description of it has some wetland between east and west, but I didn't see it in the plans. Is it identified in the plan somewhere, or...
No, those were mitigated a while back. I don't know if Glenn can speak to that or not, or anybody else. But, the long staff drain, number one, used to diagonally go through this development way before my time, and apparently, they mitigated that and put it underground and ran it south of this property until the two drains come together southeast of here. So, those are gone. There used to be a drain going through that.
So, there is no wetland, because again, in the application, it indicated that there is some wetland between east and west.
Well, that was on the planner's review, so...
Right, I think what happened there, if I'm not mistaken, is probably was mitigated when the sub was built. It shows up on the map, but it's not accurate. I think it's on the county map, which is generalized only anyways, so it's probably no longer accurate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good catch. Mr. Wozniak?
For the petitioner, do you qualify for an industrial facilities exemption going forward, do you know?
I think so. I think there's an attorney handling that in our office separately, but I think all these lots will qualify, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oppone?
Move to approve site plan application number 17-48 for Yorg Hensel, for property located at 505-81 Sabrina Drive. Parcel numbers 23-07-24-125-011, and part of 23-07-24-125-101. Subject to submission of the revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Oppone, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Oppone?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Dallo?
Yes.
De Seco?
Yes.
Casali?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, next, site plan number 17-49, 50400 Sabrina.
Okay, this one, Unit 6, is east of the previous one. It is a speculative industrial building, again, 25,000 square feet with a couple thousand square feet of office, and a couple truck wells in the back. Same facade, brick facade in the front with about 30-foot height, clear height, structural steel frame, and same construction. I got nothing to add to that unless some... I can turn it around and look at the elevation if we do that too, or do you... Do they snapshot that and then memorize it, and then I can turn it? Doesn't matter.
Yeah, go ahead, I want you to turn it. While you do that, Julie, you have this one as well?
Yes. And then, just some minor comments on this one there indicate the library and page numbers for any easements. Replace the wall pack W1 with the full cutoff light fixture that's labeled "Wall Pack 2", indicate the sidewalk width. And then, small correction on page SP-S1 referencing the parking space dimensions on the north side of the buildings. Indicate any screening details for roof mounted equipment. Building Department also said an additional accessible parking space is required. And then, a comment from the Macomb County Department of Roads is to modify the radii on the north side of the entrance to avoid encroachment into the adjacent property. And the engineer also had some minor comments similar to what I referenced on the previous plan.
The only question I have is on the wall packs. So, when we're in an industrial use, facing another industrial piece of property, are we going to fully shield it now on all of our fixtures?
Yes, the ordinance has changed, Yorg, and it requires now all light wall pack fixtures to be pointed down.
Okay.
Because surprisingly, even though those aren't... You think the light carries a long way with those other ones, so that's why we adjusted the ordinance.
Okay.
No issues?
No, those all sound reasonable. Yes, thanks.
Okay. To the board, any questions? Hearing none, all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Move to approve site plan application number 17-49 for Yorg Hensel, for property located at 50400 Sabrina Drive. Parcel numbers 23-07-24-125-006. Subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, and finally, site plan number 17-50, 13800 Cavalier Drive.
Okay, so we have a Unit 8, we call it. It's a speculative industrial building, again, 48,000 square feet with about 5,000 square feet of office. All the same characteristics as the other buildings on the street, about 30-foot in height, and a brick office facade.
Does that fill up this industrial park, this little area, or are there still vacant lots? So, this is the last three lots?
Yeah, these are the last three lots.
Okay. Ms. Mizic?
Okay. Again, just very minor comments indicate sidewalk and width. Replace the wall pack from W1 to wall pack W2. The acreage for the site differs from page SP-S1 to SP-C3, so I think we just figure out which one it is.
Okay.
Indicate the width of the parking spaces. Indicate any screening details for roof mounted equipment. All parts of the building need to be within 200 feet of a fire hydrant. FDC shall be 50 to 100 feet from a fire hydrant. FDC shall be street side. And then, make corrections to both of the entrance radii per Macomb County Department of Roads. And the engineer's comments are all similar as the other site plans.
Okay. And we do have hydrants that weren't shown on that off-site, that we are within 200 feet, so all those are not nonissues.
Okay. To the board, any questions? Mr. Dallo?
Is there users for all of these properties, or nothing in mind?
Not for these three, no.
Not yet.
No, we're getting some inquiries, but no users yet.
Thank you.
Your motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan application number 17-50 for Yorg Hensel, for property located at 13800 Cavalier Drive. Subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by De Seco, support by Casali. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Is that it? Anything else?
That's it.
All right. You too. Good luck. Next, site plan number 14-43, special land use number 11, 23 Corporate Holdings. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the acting secretary to read the notice as published, please.
Yes, Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Joseph Carradonna, 23 Corporate Holdings LLC, 2145 Crooks, Suite 210, Troy, Michigan, 48084. The proposed use is hotel and retail building. The location is a vacant parcel number 23-07-23-151-015, the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Corporate Drive. Site plan number 17-43 SLU-11. Sidewell number 23-07-23-151-015. The legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November 27th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006, as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. Thirteen property owners and four applicants were notified by first-class mail on November 3rd, 2017.
Great, thank you. And those property owners, is anyone within 300 feet of the site are notified? Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Great, thank you. Have we received any correspondence on this? I don't believe so. No, okay, thank you. All right, the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning for the request. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be opened to the public, and then the petitioner can address it. This isn't a debate, so we'll let them come, we'll ask some questions. Anyone in the public can come up and ask questions to the board, and we'll bring up the petitioner to answer those questions. So, petitioner here? Can you get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Joseph Carradonna, 2145 Crooks Road, Suite 210, Troy, Michigan, 48084. Come before you tonight with the rezoning of this property to allow for a hotel and a retail facility to accommodate the hotel in the area. As you guys are aware, we've had quite a boom in that section with all the manufacturing and tech businesses coming in, and the great news of Amazon joining us. So, quite a bit of a need for another hotel that Hampton Inn runs at very near 100% occupancy a lot of the times, and there's not enough rooms for people to stay, and they're having to go to other areas. So, we've done all the feasibility studies to make sure there's quite the demand there. We've also are bringing a brand to the area that's quite different than anything around. It's Cambria, which is the highest end of the Choice Hotels. You might be familiar with Days Inn, Quality Inn. So, Cambria typically is reserved for urban areas, downtowns, New York. There's 100 of them in development, 44 open in the U.S. right now. But they're mostly in very high visibility downtown urban areas, but with the demand, they approved this site, so we're kind of a pioneer, which is exciting. It'll be 100 rooms, four stories. It does have a full-service restaurant and bar inside. Speaking to a lot of the tenants that are in the corporate industrial area, they want a place, they have training and stuff that goes on where people stay here sometimes a week or two weeks. And a lot of them don't have vehicles. They get shuttled in, they get dropped off, and they go back and forth between the facilities and their hotel, but they don't have a lot to do. So, in addition to a swimming pool, fitness center, business center, we have a full-service restaurant and bar inside the hotel. They do breakfast and dinner. They typically don't do lunch. We have the retail center that's shown on there, which, right now, we already have a tenant of Detroit Taco, and we're working with a cycle fitness studio right now, but they haven't fully committed yet. So, you know, the thoughts are add to the lunch crowd, accommodate all the workers, employees there with the retail, and, you know, service the housing needs of the people in the area with the hotel.
Okay. Again, I sort of misspoke when I read this. Decision isn't a rezoning. This is to allow special land use.
Oh, right, special land use.
Mr. Chairman, there was several months ago, maybe it was even last year, we made an interpretation, we made an interpretation that we could allow this as a special land use in the light manufacturing. Because it's typically not a use that's listed, but the ordinance says any use is listed plus those similar to, and we've made the interpretation this is similar to. So, it offers you some discretion rather than trying to rezone the property kind of arbitrarily. It makes more sense. This is a direct way to address this issue.
Okay. So, next time we get around to modifying, you know, we'll throw that in.
We'll list hotels.
Very good. Okay. To the board, any commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Carradonna, have you read the engineer's comments?
I have not seen those yet.
Mr. Winn also, it was pointed out to me before the meeting. The proposed use of the site generates greater than 750 trips per day. I don't know how you get that in a hotel. What kind of retail are you planning on having there?
You know, again, I actually was talking about this on the way in. The hotel typically doesn't have that much use there. Most people are either getting a cab or a shuttle. We're actually going to have a shuttle bus that's part of the hotel to pick people up from the airport and drop them back off to the industrial facilities. So, I don't think the hotel generates that money, because even our staff, there's only five people at any given time. I mean, you have your front desk, your manager, maintenance guys coming, and the housekeeping coming for a short time in the middle of the day between 11:00 and 3:00, and do all the cleaning. So, I think that might be coming from the retail portion, which, again, I don't know where they're coming up with that trips from that small of a retail center. It's a very small...
Unless these are really good tacos.
And then, they do do $2 tacos on Tuesdays, so maybe on Tuesdays you'll get some traffic, but I, you know, I do think too, the nice part is, we don't have direct access off 23. I know that's a very congested intersection. I deal with it regularly. And, but, we're coming in off Corporate Drive. The nice part is, it's a right turn, so we think it's really good, get off the exit, come in, make a right. It's actually, we're hoping, going to pull some of that business from that, really the bottleneck happens with everyone trying to turn left to get into the Walmart. So, you know, we're hopeful that that really helps, because we're kind of opposite of everything else that's there. Everybody's trying to get to the Tim Hortons and go to the north side, and there's not that big of a left turn lane going south on the Corporate, or getting off the expressway, usually can get right off and turn down the road. So, I think actually, our project will help some of the traffic, because it's going to give choices to people to the south instead of always having to go to the north retail center.
The only reason I brought that up is because the engineer did say a traffic impact statement is required under the ordinance, but I think, as you just pointed out, given the location, I think this is a great spot for a hotel if we need one, because you do have easy access ingress and egress right off the freeway. Mr. Winn, I mean, what are your thoughts on this?
Two comments before... Mr. Ale jumps in with the technical comments, but, you know, this intersection, I know there's some scheduled improvements to the intersection that are being proposed for, I think, maybe next year or the year after. It is what it is in terms of capacity beyond taking property and expanding it more broadly. This isn't going to be truck traffic coming in here, which does kind of make that intersection work a little more difficultly with, you know, the turning movements. But, you know, doing a study, just to do a study, I don't think it tells us anything more than, you know, that the company doesn't already know is happening there. And again, I know those improvements will help modestly with the turning movements, but, you know, I think this... The other thing about the traffic generation studies, they're based on stand-ups, you know, studies done all over the country. This may be a little more of a unique type hotel that generates a little bit less because of the fact that people aren't coming in and out all day.
That's a car in and out almost every minute. That seems excessive, and I don't see why we would need a traffic impact statement, but he did put that in his comments, so...
You know what, forgive me, because I had mentioned I didn't see those. Those were the previous comments where we addressed them. I think it's a standard boilerplate comment when I spoke to them, and that it's usually up to the discretion of you guys if it can be waived or not.
Well, but he came up with a number, though, that's curious, and I think we were talking about this prior.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Winn, any thoughts on where that could have possibly come from?
It would have been from the ITC traffic, there's a manual that's about this thick, that they generate traffic data for every possible use from all over the country, you know, with weighted averages based on certain circumstances.
So, a hotel is X amount?
Yes.
X square footage of retail is Y amount?
Yes.
And then, that still seems odd, but, okay. Anything else, Mr. Turner?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the special land use. Anyone in the audience or group spokesperson is now welcome to speak in support of the project, against, or just offer whatever comments they may have. Does anyone wish to address this? Need your name and address, and then afterwards, if you could sign in too. Thanks.
Mario Kezy, 13474 Partridge Run, Shelby Township, Michigan. I live around the corner from the site and have some sentimental value in 23 Mile. Actually, I have a development down the road. I was here about a month ago. I'm a Marriott franchisee, not in Michigan, but in Ohio. And my only comment's beautiful rendering, but I think it is a bit boutique for this market. And I also, out of all the brands of hotels, I feel that choice is one of the weakest. So, just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Got to sign in.
Oh. Going once, going twice. Mr. Winn?
Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. You even gave me a cheat sheet.
All right. The list of comments on here was actually kind of sizable, but it generally falls into three categories. In terms of notes, you need to show the rooftop equipment, either detail or note saying that there's going to be some type of screening. The engineer indicated that they needed to see the gross building area for the hotel. There was a discrepancy between the legal descriptions on several of the sheets. They needed to see the pavement and materials indicated, and they'd like to see some directional signage for the drive-throughs. In terms of the site design itself, I'd like to see some improved sidewalk connections, specifically connecting the hotel to the south entrance, the employee parking to the retail on the northwest side. The sidewalk that crosses the drive-through is kind of a blind corner, and someone's going to get hit eventually on that. There's some conflicts and inconsistencies between the landscaping and the lighting plans, and the engineer wanted to see the indication of the site circulation and to verify the adequacy of the turning radius for trucks and vehicles, especially on the west side of the site, and to... And there was some confusion over on the north side of the retail, whether that's an outdoor seating, whether that's where the utilities are coming, how it's going to be screened, that type of thing. She also had some concerns over the utility demands and configuration for the water in the sewer. I had a question on the hotel. There's light fixture I. It's not really clear what that's intended to do. It looks like a light bar, whether that's pointing up, shining, like flooding the whole side of the building, or what its actual intent is. There was a question over, this being a shared parking on this, would the site be eventually split? And if that was the case, it would need to get some type of parking agreement in place. The traffic study was already described. And finally, there's several variances that are required for this. The site encroaches in both to the front and the rear setbacks, 50 foot is required on both, 25 is provided. The maximum roof height for this area is 40 feet. You have a 44-foot four indicated. And the parking lot fixtures, I'm not sure if this is an issue with the notes, or if a variance is required. Some of the pages indicated 20 feet, some pages indicated 25. So, if it's 25, that would be a variance required.
Would you like me to start from the top?
Yeah.
We, I think we've addressed quite a few of those issues and resubmitted some plans back. We've also met with Fazel Khan and addressed all the engineering, turning radius, and utility issues. On the site plan there, we did add some, those walkways you were talking about. It's very typical with just about every restaurant that you're going to have that has a drive-through, at some point, they cross the drive-through. I mean, McDonald's, I mean, I don't think there's a way to avoid crossing the drive-through with any, you know, with any type of configuration like that.
I wasn't intending for you to not cross the driveway, but to cross further away from the building, so it's not so blind.
Right. Right. Yeah, we can perhaps move the window back to hold the cars back a little bit there and put some kind of a signage in there, you know, kind of like yield. I mean, we'll, we'll make sure across that area that there's some kind of a, maybe we can change the material, have a concrete stripe or decorative concrete, so it's clear that they can cross that area and that the cars hold back, maybe even a speed bump or something I've seen for safety. We're willing to do that. The, as far as the split, there is not going to be a split as far as land split. If we do anything, it'll be a condominium document. That would just be purpose, for the lending purposes, because the hotel lenders don't want the retail all grouped together. So we would have a master deed with a general common elements of the parking lot. You may have even noticed there are some notes on there that might say, like, general common element, limited elements. Those are for the proposed condominium dock. So there'd just be a two-unit condominium here one day in the future when we look to get permanent financing. As far as those light fixtures, that, I think I know what you're talking about. It's a decorative light. It doesn't really shine out. It's more of, like, decorations on the building. So they're kind of like a backlit display where you can see them, but they don't throw a lot of light. It's, so when you're, like, driving down off the expressway, you can kind of see, like, that lit up in the building. I'd call it, like, ambient lighting or backlighting. And then, the light poles was a mistake. They are all 20 feet. So we are aware we need a ZBA for this. We already have the application prepared for just the two, the height restriction and the setbacks requirement. And the height restriction is mostly because of the parapet. If you look on the rendering for the front, it comes up a little bit for the aesthetics, and those also take care of our screening needs, so that everything's screened behind the parapet opposed to being a flat roof, meeting the requirement, and not having the screening.
Okay. Entertainer motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Support.
By Turner, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our recommendation must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapprove the request, or table to evaluate it further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval to the township board for site plan application number 17-43 SLU 11 for Joseph Carradonna, Retail and Cambria Hotel, Corporate Drive south of 23 Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments and approval from the zoning board of appeals for all required variances.
All right.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Pone. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Casale?
Yes.
Chair both yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Carradonna, how long do you anticipate construction?
Um, we hope to be...
Taylor, why don't you come to the mic and let everyone hear your pearls?
Looking to, as soon as we can get approvals...
Hang on, let me ask a question.
Oh, go ahead. You ask on the mic, I think.
Yes. How long do you anticipate your construction?
We believe it'll take 12 to 18 months to complete the project once we submit for permits, for building permits. So as fast as we can get through this process, we, we're shooting for 2019 grand opening right now.
Thank you.
Early 2019. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next item is site plan number 17-41, shores of Clear Springs Lake. This was an item that was tabled about a month ago or so. Mr. Nguyen, why don't you kind of, do you want to start, or...
Sure. So the, the, let me, let me kind of sort of frame where we're at with this, and then they can make their presentation.
Yeah.
The, this is for the final phase of the subdivision that started many, many years ago. It's for lots along the northern property line. And I want to explain the process. The previous time, when they came in, the three previous ones, they submitted this as the normal subdivision process, which is a three-step process and rather lengthy. They're doing this now as, through the site condominium process, which is a similar process that we have that parallels, really, it's almost identical to the subdivision review process. Same standards apply. It's just that it takes two steps, not three steps. And the first step is where they're at tonight, in which is preliminary. And what we're looking for here is a boundary survey of the site and a plan showing the natural features and how it's going to be developed. So in this case, where the roads are and the arrangement and dimensions of the lots. If you approve the preliminary plan, all that allows them or enables them to do is to move on to the next step, which is engineering. They would have to obtain all their engineering reviews from not only our engineer, but the Macomb County Department of Roads, the Public Works Department, DEQ, whoever else has jurisdiction. Once those are obtained, they would have to come back to us, along with their master deed, which is, I think, a key concern to the residents, of tying in restrictions from this part of the sub to the existing sub. All that would have to be done at that next step. Assuming they get all that done, then they're allowed to put a shovel in the ground. But tonight's review is really authorization only to proceed to the next step. So, and let me kind of run through some of what was changed. Or maybe you want them to present next, then?
Yeah, we'll let them...
And then I'll jump into my comments after that.
Sounds good. All right. Name and address, please.
Steve Orr. I'm representing Lakeshore, Shelby. We're at 5877 Liverneuil and Troy. We were here a month ago or so discussing this project, and it's a proposed residential...
Can I get you to speak into the mic?
It's a proposed addition to a residential community that obviously already exists. We bought a couple of site maps so you could visualize. The one on the bottom shows the existing site and the addition to, we can put that up on the easel for if it made it easier. And then the, the new proposed site is on the top of the easel there, showing the 54 proposed new sites that are in addition to the existing community.
He's got it on the camera, so you're right.
I brought with us a couple of consultants. Maybe Tom Sawyer could give you a little background on the history of the, of the project and explain, you know, how we ended up where we are and...
Well, I mean, I think we, again, I was out of town for this meeting, so I looked at my fellow board members. Were these issues addressed? The history, do we need to do this?
Yeah, I think it's important they show what they've changed since then, yeah.
That's what I kind of want to get to. I don't think we need to reinvent what, you know...
A lot of it was discussed. You just have to talk about what they've revised on the plan.
Right. There were a whole slew of issues, and so what have you done to address them, I guess, is what we're going to talk about.
Well, essentially, we addressed every issue, and we sent a correspondence to Mr. Nguyen, I believe, and also we communicated with the community. We decided to reach out to people within 600 feet, kind of double the, the amount of people that are typically required to be notified. And we provided them with an answer to every one of the, of the questions that were brought up at the, at the last meeting, kind of a, you know, a synopsis, and addressed every, every issue. There was, there was 19 bullet points. And we sent this correspondence out to all of these homeowners with a phone number and a, an email. If there was any questions or problems, they could contact us directly. And that correspondence was sent out, I believe, November 3rd, and we only received one email. And the email was in regard to the, a question about connecting the existing subdivision to the north, to the new proposed subdivision in which, with a roadway, which, which had been eliminated from the original plan. So that was the only other question that we received. Would you like me to run down the list?
Yeah, why don't you go through them? Let me, you know, make sure...
Okay. One of the biggest concerns was in regard to the way the bylaws and the master deed and the documents were going to, were going to be combined. So that was item number one. And so we asked the subdivision association board members to join us at our office for a lengthy meeting to discuss the existing bylaws in Phase 1, the turnover in Phase 2 and Phase 3, and the interrogation of all of those bylaws into the, into the new subdivision so that they would all be cohesive and, and be controlled by one entity. So, and the board, some of the board members are here today. I recognize them when they came in. They may have some questions for you. And then, so we discussed that, and we talked about the, the deeds and the bylaws as they relate to the county and the township. The next item was, there was a question about the, the way that the DEQ permit was approved in regard to the lakeshore, shoreline remediation.
I guess I need to step just maybe six inches back. We invest a lot of money in our audio visual...
Okay. How's that? I couldn't hear it myself, so I apologize. At any rate, there was a...
Oh, it's on his phone.
At any rate, item number three was in regard to the restoration of the lakeshore, which is part of the DEQ permit, was, which was included with the original submission. And there was some question about how that was going to be restored and whether the lake was going to be expanded or contracted. And we explained to them that the, the lakeshore itself is just going to be restored to basically what its original shoreline was before the, many years ago, before all the erosion occurred. And so that was one of the questions. And there was a question about the, the street access points in regard to, to actually constructing the project. And unfortunately, the only way in is through the subdivision roads, which are, which are public roadways. And we explained to the homeowners association and all interested that we would be, you know, following all of the requirements of the, of the county road commission in regard to the weight restrictions and, and use of those roads, and, you know, would be as careful as possible. The homeowners association from the, the number one association, which is furthest to the east, was concerned about using their access point because they felt like that it was, it was harder to access through their entryway. And we agreed, the, the other entry, which is a little bit farther west on 23 Mile, is a, is a much wider entry and an easier roadway, so we would probably be accessing it through that point. So we explained that to them at that time. There was a privacy view issue. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, one of my pages slipped here. There was, there was quite a few items. There was a question about the permitting of the MDEQ lakeshore restoration, and we explained that that was included in the package. There was a question about driveway location in regard to, one of the homeowners from Phase 1 was actually here, and his property was the one at the north end of Phase 1 that was the last house, actually, the last house on the left, as it were. His driveway is on the right-hand side, and we told him it wasn't an issue, so the next submittal on the plan shows the driveways reversed, so that there will be no issue with driveway to driveway. At some point, as you loop around, and I don't know exactly which site it is, but we're going to have a driveway to driveway situation because it's unavoidable. But it won't be at either of the, where the new sub abuts the old. So that was an issue there. Pardon me. There was a question about, sorry, losing my spot. Master deed bylaws, lot expansion will be consistent with the subs 1 through 3. The cost of maintenance was brought up, and that all has to do with the, the way the bylaws are going to be cajoined with the existing subdivisions. Lakeshore quit claim the lake bottom rights to maintain the lake in 1983. There was a question about who actually owned the lake bottom and, you know, what implications there were in regard to who had the authority to alter that lake bottom. And, and I'm, I brought Mr. Sawyer along because he's the attorney, but it was, it's basically described in the, in the, in the deed as to how the, the lake bottom is, is controlled by the subdivision association. But we left an opportunity for us to be able to alter the, the lakeshore to create this subdivision. So we kind of explained that at the, at the meeting that we had. There was a question about the sediment and, and the fill from the lake and how it was going to be removed. And we explained that and to the subdivision association, but basically, we're just going to be drawing the slough or the sand that it sloughed in the lake from the bank and just pulling it back up to the bank to restore the original shoreline. So that was explained...
Sea wall?
Pardon me?
Are you putting a sea wall?
We have been permitted for a sea wall, but we're hoping we're not going to need one to retain the soil. The rest of the...
I'm going to determine that, I guess. I'm sorry.
It would be MDEQ that would determine that, I'm assuming.
Whether the, how solid that is.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The, the existing lakeshore in the first three phases has very little sea wall. Some of the residents have added sea wall on their own, but the original developer did not use sea wall. And, and the bank seems to be holding pretty well. But if it's not, if it's not vegetated, then it tends to slough off pretty quick because the soil is very granular there, very sandy, so it doesn't, it doesn't hold up to very long without some kind of vegetation. There was a question about the possibility of wildlife disruption, and we explained that we'll minimize, we'll minimize that. We don't expect to kill any animals or do anything like that. I think, once we develop the, the site, the wildlife that is living there, we'll, you know, find someplace else to head off to. Let's see, number 11. The land elevations of expansion according to the township. Oh, our original plans didn't show retaining walls, and it was recommended that we add those to the site plan, and they've since been added.
So you are going to have, you are going to see walls?
Are, uh, these are retaining walls.
They're all retaining.
I'm sorry. There's the...
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the retaining walls were not originally part of the plan but have been added. They were recommended by the consulting engineer, I believe. There was a question about the speed at which this was being developed, and I think that was addressed in, in item 12 in regard to the expansion and the, evidently, this project has been basically been under development for over 30 years, or closing in on 40 years. So this hasn't been a hurried, I think that the questioner was, was concerned about the pace at which the development was happening. And it's been, it's been thoughtfully developed and designed, and that was explained at our There was a question about a natural spring that may have existed on the site. I've only done cursory examination by walking the site, and I'm certainly not an expert in regard to a natural spring, but I believe that the, the water that, or the existing ponding on the site is due to, to topography and not any actual existing spring or artesian well-type things. And it's just a matter of the, of the topography that was left and the water that's trapped, and all that's addressed in the grading plans. There are utilities that already exist through that site. There's a, a large water main, and there's also a sewer main that runs through it. So it's been disrupted many times. Soil retain, okay, well, there's another, another question about a retaining wall, which was answered in, in the previous comment. There was also a resident from the... There was also a resident from the neighboring neighborhood to the north that was concerned about the elevations of the homes due to the fact that the existing subdivisions are up quite high and the new proposed site is quite a bit lower. And I think that was addressed by an engineering comment, and the setbacks were changed from thirty-five feet to fifty-foot in the rear yards to accommodate that concern. Pardon me. I think there was a question about the size of the lake being disrupted, and it was explained that the shoreline is just being restored, and the actual acreage of the lake is a little bit bigger than it was actually proposed. It was, I believe that the homeowners association believed that the lake was ninety acres, and it's actually a little more than ninety-two acres when it becomes restored. So, it's not going to be, the lake itself will not be decreased in size. And the last comment was, there were some questions about the type of homes that are being proposed to be built there. Right now, we're planning on continuing the, pretty closely the style of architecture and the size of homes that are existing there. The company that I represent built, finished out Phase Three, which the homes on the lake generally range from thirty-two-hundred to forty-two-hundred square foot, all brick. And the homes on the opposite side of the lake or the non-lake fronts are a little bit smaller, but generally range from about twenty-nine-hundred to about thirty-six-hundred square feet, and they're all brick homes, mostly three-car garages. So, that was, that was all the notes that we had from the first meeting, and they were all addressed, I believe.
Mr. Wynn?
So, I think there's two broad categories of comments that I had concerns with. Number one is obviously the lot requirements, lot sizes and lot setbacks. So, this lot, this development was built, as Mr. Orr said, over a number of years, and in that interim period, we changed the ordinance requirements in R-1B and made the lots bigger. So, they do meet all the lot width requirements. They're still a little shy of the area in some of the lots, and they are applying the lot averaging requirement, which is a flexible opportunity allowing the ordinance. It will allow them to, you know, go forward with this, but it will require township board approval. More importantly, are the setbacks. And, you know, the last meeting, they did show along the northern property line, those lots nine through twenty-nine having thirty-five-foot rear yard setbacks, which created concern for the residents that live in the sub to the north, which is higher, and our staff as well. And that was a big concern to us, I think, you know. We made these increases in lot size and setbacks to accommodate bigger homes, and you have bigger homes in the subdivision. To me, it's kind of goes against what we were trying to do by decreasing the setback. So, I'm glad to see that they've adjusted that and have fifty-foot setbacks along the rear property line. Along the shoreline, it's less of a concern because they're not backing up to anybody. But those lots that are along that slope have some considerable limitations. The second category concerns are, relate to the slopes, and if you look at our review, items five, six, seven, and eight deal, are from the building department, deal with those. They will require soil testing for placement of fill and land balancing for all the building and deck and patio areas. There's been concerns about in prior years and prior stages of this development, improved shoreline areas contrary to MDEQ requirements, and the MDEQ requirement should be in the bylaws and/or the master deeds, so people are aware of that. The slopes on the backsides of retaining wall or steeple are likely difficult to maintain. If intended to be accessed, guardrails should be provided. And given significant elevation differences across the lots, most will require township engineer inspection rather than building department. So, there's an elevated review process for these lots based on those slope and engineering requirements. But the biggest concern I have were the setbacks, and my original recommendation was to postpone this until they adjusted that. Since they did adjust it accordingly, I'm more comfortable allowing them to go forward to the next stage, which is final review. And I didn't, you know, we, this is one of the reviews that our engineer and our department worked really closely on. You recall at the last meeting, Carol Thurber, our engineer, had said she did not recommend approval based on the lack of the retaining walls. That was her biggest concern. She's satisfied, her, number of her review comments was decreased substantially, and she'd also recommended the rear yard setbacks be increased to fifty feet. So, there are still issues to resolve. I think Mr. Orr's team has done a really good job of addressing some of those, I call them the legal issues, dealing with the associations. We'll have to get that reconciled when they come in for final approval, but I think they've made substantial progress, and I'm not uncomfortable recommending approval of the preliminary phase only, recognizing nothing, you can't put a shovel in the ground until they come back to us and get all those details finalized. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. To the board, any questions for petitioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Orr, I'm going to give Mr. Wasnick some kudos here. He brought up two points, one from Mr. Wynn, but the first from Mr. Orr. He asked you at the last meeting if you were open to adding some green space to the property, and that was brought up to help ease access to the lake, to the new homes. At that meeting, you said you're unsure at that point. Are you a little more sure tonight, or are you still unsure about whether, because Mr. Wynn did say negotiations for green space would be appropriate? And people did bring it up that we're going to have some, we could have possible problems accessing the lake, and that's why it was mentioned possibly having a park or having a central access point in the rear, I mean, in the northern section for the new homes to help ease access to the lake.
All right, I need your name, address.
My name is Tom Sawyer.
Hang on, hang on, wait till you talk to the mic.
My name is Tom Sawyer, S-A-W-E-R. I'm the attorney for Lake Shore and have been since going back to the seventies when they first developed this property. When we developed the first phase, we put in two, we gave to the association two very large lots. They're huge lots, lakefront lots, and they developed that into a park. We met with the homeowners association, and they indicated to us on several occasions, they really do not, and Kathy Ireland and Bill Ireland here from the association, they said to me and to our people on a few occasions, they really didn't want to have another park. It's a problem of enforcement, trying to enforce the rights to use of the park, and secondly, the cost of maintenance of the park. It's quite a large park. It's a beautifully devolved park, and they, they've indicated, as a reference in the association, they just do not want to expand on the park area. They feel that park, and I think I state that fairly, they feel a park that's there is very large and can very well serve the community. And it is a lot for them to maintain. Now they'll have Phases Two, Three, and Four to participate in the maintenance, but that was our feeling, and that's one of the reasons we decided that. And there were discussions with them over the years as well, when Mr. Garrett was alive, along the same line. So, that's why we pretty much decided, we wanted to work with the association, not take a different approach to this. So, that's, I guess, a response.
Okay, I appreciate that. If I could maybe later, Mr. Chairman, have somebody from the association come up and clarify that, verify that for me. There was also Mr. Wynn, assuming we approve this, there was a note about a bond for construction for damage to the roads. Mr. Wasnick also brought that up. Would that be, could that be included in the motion for the building department to do, or what?
Yes, you could include it in the motion. I think it's a reference, but at the end of the day, it would be the Department of Roads, but I think it's useful for us to have that hook in there, too. It's a good suggestion.
Okay, I would just like to hear what the association has to say about the added green space. Maybe not necessarily a park, but a central access point for the lake. I'd just like to hear what they have to say about that.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Wasnick?
With regard, I'm not sure who's prepared to answer this, maybe you. With regard to the agreements with the other parts of the subdivision, the master deeds and the bylaws and everything, how far along are you guys with everything?
You've probably seen from the documents I submitted that I've retained Bill Maher, a very, very skilled condominium lawyer, to assist us in this project. Bill's a retired partner of a deck and a gas, and now with another firm. In my opinion, he's probably the most skilled condominium lawyer in the state of Michigan. Bill feels without any question that we can do this, and we want this project to be just an extension of Phases One, Two, and Three. That's all it really is. We're just doing it under the condo law because that's the way it's done today more commonly. I think the township favors that way, and do we. Bill's assured me that there's no, and he's assured, he's indicated the lawyer for the association, that he feels clearly we can do that and have this new condo section be part and parcel of a total project. The important thing is the declaration of building and use restrictions, and your attorneys will have to approve those. And he'll prepare them. I think your attorneys are very familiar with Bill Maher, and he's just a very, very well-qualified man to prepare the documents in such a way that everybody's interest will be protected. So, he's been working on them. He's done, I may be done ten, he's, I don't know how many he's done, he's done hundreds of them. So, he has made clear to me and to the attorney for the association that he can do this, and I think Kirk and Huth know that he's probably the most qualified, in my judgment, the most qualified condominium lawyer in Michigan, so.
To answer my question, how soon will you have those documents ready for signature?
Well, it'll be a while, it'll be a while yet, probably, but certainly as we move forward with the engineering plan. We know we got the approval. We'll go ahead and prepare the master deed, prepare a common declaration of restrictions for the whole project, and when we're, and they'll submit them to Kirk and Huth as well. And we'll move as quickly as can be accomplished. The whole engineering project will have them done.
Mr. Wynn?
Mr. Chairman, the submission of the master deed is required at the final phase, so we do have that opportunity to reconcile. I think they've done a lot, for being in the early phase, I think they've done a lot of that head legwork already, which I'm pleased to hear. You know, I think this presentation is much more prepared than previously, and I'm encouraged by that, encouraged by the responses.
Just a general comment to follow up. Mr. Wynn, I'm pretty impressed with what you guys have accomplished, reaching out to the neighbors and working on this, so hopefully it'll keep going.
We'll stay with it. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is there somebody from the association that can address the question on the park and lake access?
Good evening. Bill Ireland, president of Clear Spring Lake Home Association. Just to answer a couple of questions that came up. One was the park, which seemed to be an issue. We've had numerous discussions at our board level of whether we want another park, another access point to the lake, and it's always come up, the answer is no. It's not because we're opposed to having green space, it's just we have an issue with security on the lake with people bringing in invasive species on their boats, launching them that aren't part of the association. By having one access point, we monitor boats coming in off the lake to make sure they conform to our regulations. Our park is basically used for two things, launching boats and fishing, it's a shore fishing. It is never crowded. I go by their lot, they're never, it's never crowded. Usually, once a person gets a boat on the lake, they have no need to use the park unless there is, take the boat off, they get it repaired or something. So, as an association, we are opposed to another park, per se. It's a maintenance liability issue. As far as the documentation, how they're coming along, we think they're coming along pretty good. We met with Mr. Sawyer, with our attorney. They've been going back and forth, as I can tell by the bills, going back and forth to get it worked out, all the, I guess, the difficulty because of the condominium association and the subdivision, to try to merge those two. But we feel that we're this close to getting everything done. I guess so. I just applaud the cooperation we've had with the developer, sitting down in a meeting with us and going over point by point, so. That's our comments for this evening, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? This time another taken a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, okay. Didn't hear my name, I didn't know. Can I move to, thank you.
All right.
That's okay.
Egos are what they are.
No, no. Move to approve the preliminary condominium plan for the shores of Clear Spring Lake, Site Plan Number Seventeen dash Forty-One, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments and addition of a construction bond. Mr. Wynn, help me out with the wording.
Construction bond for, to approve, to deal with any road damage.
Okay, that's the motion.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by opponent. Any questions on the motion?
Well, he did the setbacks.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
It's based on the, they said revised plan with fifty-foot.
Revised plan, yes.
Right.
Sorry.
No question?
Just one question for Mr. Kirk. What do you, what do you feel you'd be required to review of anything, and are you comfortable with what we've heard?
Would we review the master deed as Tom stated, and also then the restrictions of the existing subdivisions, so that they all mesh together, so they're all similar, and some kind of mechanism in place maybe for enforcement between those two groups?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Well, we had a public hearing. Were there some issues that weren't addressed that we, I just had, that's why I had them go through them all? Well, I'll tell you what, why don't you come on up?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, any, we had, I don't know how many people were at the last meeting, but there were probably twenty people that spoke. Everybody that spoke that signed in, we sent the notice back out, too. I think the work that they've done in the meantime has helped mitigate that to some degree.
Yeah, I mean, they've sent us, yeah, six hundred feet. Everyone got, you know, answers to, all the questions were raised at the public hearing, so I guess I'm a little less inclined to think that they're, but go ahead. If there's something that we haven't heard that hasn't been addressed?
Well, there was a lot of, Robert Decker, five-one, five-zero-nine, Forster Lane, two houses away from the development area. There was a lot of concern from a lot of residents that were not informed that any of this was going on because of they stuck to the three hundred feet, which encompassed about two houses up against this. But you can see that the people live all the way down Forster Lane on the left, that's the road they want to come down. They were told at the last meeting a month ago to address a lot of issues with the residents that they had. They sent out a packet about, I don't know how many pages thick, that was probably authored by this gentleman here. We found it very intimidating. They were telling you what they're going to do, they were telling the board what they're going to approve, they were saying nothing's changed since nineteen seventy-nine when we started all this. And the residents look at this and think a lot of things have changed. I mean, I don't know how you can take even the map and see the square inches between how many houses are in like a four or five-inch area and take these condos and see that the number of them has doubled because we're trying to cram as many of these things in as possible. If you look at the shoreline, for forty years has been left untouched. If I can show you here, this is all, like, this area right here has twenty-four feet into the living room where they want to build a house.
All jagged right here. All right.
And they want to level it all off. I don't understand why the use of condominiums is all of a sudden this big taboo word. Mr. Orr claims that these are no different than single-family homes, but yet, we- Mr. Orr claims that these are no different than single-family homes, but yet we have to apply for condominiums and we have to have a condominium permit to proceed. We were always told when we moved into the subdivision that they would be single-family houses. Mr. Orr claims you're not going to be able to tell the difference. If that's the case, then why, why can't he apply for single-family homes? I mean, I don't understand.
They're single-family.
I don't know why we didn't.
I explained this at the beginning of the meeting, I explained it last time too. It's, it's a parallel, there's two ways to develop single-family homes. You can, well, you can, there's three ways. You can just split the lots and do them individually. You can do them through what's called the subdivision plating process, which for many years was the only way to do it. Or you can do it through the condominium process. At the end of the day, no matter how you do it, they're still detached, single-family homes. How they convey the title is not relevant for zoning purposes or land use purposes. They're single-family homes on individual lots.
Which are all going to look exactly alike.
No, they're not going to look any different than they look alike in your subdivision. It's, it's, it's.
Map he shows is every house has the same dimensions.
They're showing footprint, what they're doing is they're showing a sample footprint. They're not, typically do that for subdivisions, they're just showing what a representative footprint. That doesn't mean that's what they're going to be. They'll probably be all different, no, in a single-family subdivision, the same process would apply. These are detached, single-family homes, no different than what you have in your subdivision in each phase.
Then why is it a separate permit?
It's a different process, that's all it is, it's a parallel process. The same standards that we have in the zoning ordinance apply. Detached, single-family homes, period, on individual lots. And these lots are, I think about, they're actually 93 to 100 feet wide, if I'm not mistaken. They're, they're, they're not, they're equivalent sizes to what you have in the existing first three phases of Clear Spring Lake.
My next-door neighbor, Scott Meljum, is here and he is the last house butted up against this, the one you guys discussed the driveway on. He said he never even received this packet, which we got maybe two weeks ago in the mail. I would like the board to have had a copy of this to see how these guys are telling you what you're going to be doing. And if everybody's not informed of this, we got the notice that this was going on today, on Saturday, which means it was probably mailed out, you know, Wednesday or Thursday. People, there was 20 people here last month complaining that they weren't given enough notice. And here's even less notice. I mean, I don't get how they're told to go do stuff and then they come back and say, well, we've done this and done this, which is great, but don't look over here what we didn't do. And that just, it seems to me we should have had at least one week to, you know, plan for this. This time of year, there's illnesses going around, I had a sick kid today. And it just felt like the thing was intimidating and it was bullying and it said, we're going to do this, we're not putting in a park, we're not doing, and again, we, I thought we were told a month ago that he was supposed to hire a professional to look into this creek. And instead, he's just gone back there and said, well, there's no creek here, it's just a bunch of water. I mean, I haven't seen the thing in years, I haven't been back there, but it seems to me that somebody professional that knows what they're looking at and knows.
Well, there's, I mean, this is the first step of a, of a two-step process. Right now, we're sort of approving this more conceptually. They've gotten, I think, a little deeper than a lot, a lot of times we do in this process. Now he's got to go to engineering and, and there is somebody going to go through and make sure that there isn't, you know, a spring or, you know, you know, water on that site.
Okay.
Okay?
Those, those details will all be addressed during the engineering review of the process because the level of plans that we get.
That comes back to this body before then we recommend it. So, I mean, there, this is, there is, and frankly, I mean, in fairness to these gentlemen, they've done, I think, exactly what they were asked to do, you know, and then, and then, and then some, you know.
Well, I remember.
The own association, you know, that they've, there's been a lot of communication, a lot of money that they're spending on their end too, to communicate, make sure they get this right. Okay, they've, you know, I had the gentleman go through the issues that were raised at the last public hearing and they addressed every issue and they communicated it to a wide group of people.
There was one conversation about the road, the Forrester Lane, which, there's a gentleman that was sitting there last month, I don't see him here tonight. He was expressing, you know, you're going to bust up that road, you're going to have to repave it, why don't you agree to it now?
We just, in part of the motion, there's.
He's claiming he's not going to damage it and I just.
Well, but if he does, in this motion requires them to have a bond, so they have to fix it, the money is there to fix it.
Okay.
So that issue was addressed, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and support. I will call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Casale?
Yes.
Chair of the chest? All right, good luck moving forward, we'll, we'll see you in a month or two. This is from the floor, does anyone wish to address the body? Saying none. Mr. Nguyen?
I have. I have one item. The, the developer of the proposed fueling station convenience store at West Utica and Ryan has proposed two changes. I just wanted to share them with the commission. The, the site plan showed, original site plan showed three pump islands, they want to add a fourth one. They still have 20 feet between the parking lot and the, where the cars would park if they're fueling there, so they have sufficient room in that paved area. And also, I guess, talking to the Department of Roads, they want them to increase the width of those driveways at the throat from 30 feet to 36 feet. Other, other than that, there's no other changes. We've already approved the site plan with all the final details. I didn't want to approve this administrative, I didn't think that was fair, so I wanted to ask the commission what their pleasure was.
Any questions?
I'm okay, I'm okay.
I'm still not okay, but.
If there's no objections, I'll.
I don't see any objections. With that, Mr. Dalu? Is your support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourned.